Do you want to take this one?
Yeah.
So, we discussed this in the Finance Committee. And just for reference purposes, Items A and B, one, let's go again. After the events in Phase One facade project, which we're all aware of, IEDA several months ago, would have been last fall, they didn't know that they would potentially support an emergency cap grant for 119 East Marion to assist in the reparation of the upper storey that was damaged during all the break. So, the building owner did the research and determined, and submitted to IEDA a budget for completion of the upper storey apartments. I shouldn't say completion, for the restoration of the upper storey apartments. That information was taken in, it was viewed favorably. The next thing that happened was IEDA indicated that they were willing to support the grant if the city was willing to contribute. These have to be applied for by the city to give the business credit through IEDA. So, we discussed it in the Finance Committee last week. And the overall budget that was submitted was about $175,000 total. About half of which would be supported by IEDA. And the balance would be the responsibility of the business owner. In conversation with IEDA, there were a number of suggestions for how the city could contribute. And there were a list, and the list was provided as suggestions. And it was not a limiting list. Examples of ways that the city could contribute would be through TIF. Roughly without TIF works. Urban revitalization was another option where tax relief could be provided. Tax evasion could be provided if you have a urban revitalization zone. We do have one, it's been in force since 2001, so that was an option that was considered. Other potential options would be forgiveness on permitting, forgiveness on utilities, things of that type. But net, net of it was, is the city willing to step in financially with a commitment to support the grant? In Finance Committee, we discussed, the question is, what's the number? The number, the best number that I could work to was $15,000, either in funds or in contribution, such as I mentioned through permit or fee for different. What was discussed in the committee, and what was ultimately decided as the option that we would present for consideration by the council, was to take the $15,000 from lost, we have a balance of around $293,000, as I recall, that isn't committed to the CDs and to our local funds, and contribute that toward this project. I communicated the results of the Finance Committee meeting to IEDA because they were asking for whether or not there was any potential. And so, I shared the output of the committee meeting with the caveat that it had to be approved by the council. Subsequently, the IEDA sent a letter, which actually has a copy, saying that contingent upon the city making a foundational contribution to the project, they would approve, I believe it was $100,000, $100,000 catalyst award for the upper storey. So, what's in front of us now on Item A, and the companion for Item B, is whether or not the council is willing to authorize that contribution to the project. Questions?
Those are the figure you threw out there with what they had tentative way approved. Not $100,000?
$175,000 for the budget.
That was the budget that was worked out by the council.
And that was the same number they were looking at?
The grant is $100,000.
Oh, okay.
You only give 20%?
Okay, I didn't hear the second number.
The rest of it has to be made up by direct contributions of the business owner.
Would that set us up for down the road insisting other building owners?
In similar circumstances, this is me, my own view as a single individual councilman. In similar circumstances, yes. These are extenuating circumstances, so we'll see if something will necessarily come up or not.
See, I know we talked about a few years ago, last year, two years ago, about these other grants, and when building owners, business owners come to us and ask, ask the city involved, I thought we put a number on it, no more than $5,000 that the city would contribute. That way, we were fair to everyone that came and asked us.
I remember the conversation.
Because we didn't want to get into what we're into now is, we'll give this building owner X amount of dollars, we're only going to give this building owner this amount.
I remember the conversation, my recollection of the conversation was that in the absence of any other projects or support from other entities, IEDA or otherwise, that we would make that kind of a contribution. So, yes, I recall.
Because I think this came up when we got into a contract with the apartments on the east side of the square.
Possibly, I don't remember that part. Other questions? Thoughts, concerns?
I don't remember whether it was a hard dollar cap or it was percentage.
I guess my concern is, we, the city owns a building already, decided that we put no money into, and...
Yeah. We're also partying to a project where there was significant damage to the buildings of the first project as well, so... I think it's an opportunity to restore a business to full function. And it's, it was an unsolicited opportunity that was presented by IEDA. So, that's why we did the research, and that's why we would make the presentation to the council.
For the other businesses that maybe lost apartments.
Sorry.
You know, for the other businesses that also lost apartment and apartment revenue during that Phase One project. It's just hard, you know, to put a dollar on their account.
Do they have their revenue back, though? Do those buildings have their apartments? Because isn't that the problem with bar wires, is they don't have them back now? They might have lost it at the time?
What happened with insurance?
There was an insurance claim filed, yes.
First thing is just support applications for the project. And then, yes, and then B is like support the grant.
Okay, so that I know, so unless we approve A, B has got to be the point, is what I'm saying?
Correct. I mean, if people don't support a grant or an application for that, then it does not work particularly.
But B is the dollar amount.
I mean, I was, first note to the chair, I think I'm located where we do the other grants, like the facade grant for business, the catalyst grant on the left for business, you know? And these are all different numbers. And so, if I'm doing like a $20,000 bracelet, I just like the immediate facade, that's one thing, or doing, if it's a bigger project, pulling a bigger money, and I'm willing to justify it, just go in the same amount. So, for instance, I'll just throw it up. To that one's putting the front door in, okay, and just do that area, and you'll give her, say, $5,000 per. That may be a pretty cheap door for her, as opposed to if she does the entire outside of the building, there's a project she's pulling up money for. And I felt the 15s kind of in mind, that we had been doing now for some of these bigger projects, that would bring in money from the state.
As I recall, for a full blown catalyst, because this is an emergency, so it's going through a different process, but for a full blown catalyst, I thought our contribution was $30,000 or something like that.
I can't help you with that, I'm not sure. Is there a certain percentage that we have to give in order to receive the grant?
The information that I got from IEDA was, they were looking for a substantial, a substantial grant in the vicinity of $5,000, $15,000, excuse me.
So, that's another little struggle.
So, I think we need to approve A first, and then talk about B.
But if there's another discussion of A, but not only a motion that we approve, a letter intent to participate in the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Community Catalysts of Building Remediation Emergency Grant Analysis, and Mary's sign, in relation to 119.
East Marion.
East Marion.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
McGoughlin?
Yes.
Those figure.
Yes.
Okay, now, Item B, discussion of possible approval of financial contribution for the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a Community Catalyst and Building Remediation Emergency Grant Application.
Questions, comments, concerns?
So, in light of the size of the project, it does seem like the $15,000 is, could be an appropriate number. So, with a tentative approval by the IEDA, it would be their expectation that we would participate at a level in that ballpark, right? Is that correct?
Yep.
Otherwise, again, A doesn't mean much without B. Well, I don't think all projects are equal. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that... I'm not having total recall of this cap of $5,000, okay? I don't, I don't know how that, if, how we would make the decision to, that's the, you know, the one size fits all number. I do know that there, this project has merit. This has been something that's been hanging around. I don't, I didn't like the way it was left hanging before. And an emergency grant is something different. And I guess I have a tendency to support the matter in the fact that it's an opportunity to receive those funds or pass on. And I know, you know, you don't sign up for everything, but there's a problem where there could be shifts.
I concur. I, in my opinion, and I've been vocal about this in the past, I think you said it correctly, there's a problem where it's unfinished business from what I believe, it needs to be resolved.
Go ahead and make your motion that we approve a financial contribution of that $15,000. The Iowa Economic Development Authority for a Catalyst of Building Remediation Emergency Grant Analysis for 119 East Marion.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
McGoughlin?
I'm on the dance, but I will say yes.
Those figure.
Okay, thank you. I have a C, Kita County Economic Development, KCED report, Gary.
So, as everybody's probably aware, we had the car show last Saturday. I think we went very well, we got 71 entrants. And people came from substantial distances, in some cases, several counties away. We're seeing a lot of the same faces year after year, which says that people enjoyed the event. Hopefully, it was good for merchants on the square. I think it was, because we had pretty good crowd and the weather was favorable. So, we're very happy with the outcome. Work continues on the Childcare Initiative, as always, that's the perennial report that I give. But we're going to keep that to that, because we're actually successful. We did a center open first in Kyoto, and then hopefully in Sagerty as well. We've started to have conversations with the new superintendent over in Kyoto and Piedmont, Dave Harper, the superintendent in both schools here. So, at the moment, those conversations are encouraging, but we haven't drawn any conclusions yet. Preparation is underway also for the $10,000 raffle this fall. So, we'll keep you updated on that. We're going to come up with a little bit of a new theme, a new tagline, to hopefully raise additional interest in the event, and maybe increase attendance. So, stay tuned. That's all I have for this year.
Thank you, Gary. Parking rec, street sanitation, water and wastewater, I have nothing listed for those. Public safety, discussion and possible approval of first reading of ordinance, amended Title VI. Physical environment, Chapter 13, mobile food unit regulations.
So, last City Council meeting, we had some business owners come in and voiced their concern about the mobile food trucks that we have coming into town. So, the Public Safety Committee met last week, and we drafted this new ordinance to present to the council. It's up there, because everybody had a chance to review it. By the way, I'll have to do it line by line. Pretty much, what this is doing is, so the concern from the business owners was, one, are these, are these, are these businesses coming in, are they licensed? Are they... That was one big thing, and then another thing was, you know, the brick and mortar businesses here, they contribute to a lot of local entities, and are these mobile units doing that same contribution? Which at this time, I don't believe, we have no proof that they are. So, what we're requiring now is a permit for any of these food trucks, food trailers coming to the city to apply for a permit. Just that way, they provide a copy of their fire department inspection appeals for a mobile food license, and then they're showing us that they have insurance. And then, really, the only thing on the requirement, or operational requirements that you'll see that is, they can't operate within 150 feet of a brick and mortar business restaurant without the written consent from that establishment. So, that was something that our brick and mortars liked in the ordinance, so that's why we included it. They've had a chance to look, our local businesses have had a chance to look over this ordinance, and I haven't heard any concerns, complaints, or suggestions of changing anything. Any questions from the council?
I have a question. How does this affect on Wednesdays, when we have the food out here and so on? Because there's food trucks sitting there now. Are they exempt from this?
They're not. So...
They're certainly not going to be 150 feet from any other restaurant.
It basically concludes food trucks without, without the authorization of the business owners on the square, it basically concludes participating in the next season, so this would come into effect this season, I don't think.
And I don't, I guess, when we discussed this with a few of the business owners that were here during that meeting, this wasn't so much as the business owners coming down and saying, "We do not want them in town." They just want to make sure that they're contributing just like they are, correct?
Yes.
So, like, I don't, I don't believe that it's going to be a, a hard thing to get consent from one of the business owners on, on the square to put a food truck up there within 150 feet.
And we discussed it in the KCED, we recognize that as we plan the next season, we have to approach the individual business owners and either get their consent or their objection, so that we know whether or not we can position the truck and serve them. It's understood.
I mean, our goal, our goal with this ordinance is to protect our business owners first and foremost, so, and let them have a voice. So, if there's no further discussion, I will make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance, amending Title IV, Physical Environment, Chapter 13, Mobile Food Unit Regulations.
Lance? Did I correct it to Chapter VI?
VI, my bad. VI!
And then, yes. You're good, I just wanted to keep that.
Schultz?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry.
Clark, you're...
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
McGoughlin?
Yes.
Those figure.
Yes.
I had whispered it, and I don't think you heard it.
Oh, I didn't hear.
It's not going on the record.
I would have, I would have bitched on the issue of the ordinance.
Okay, finance, discussion of possible approval of public works loan increased from $25 to $40 for Logan, Martha, Jonathan, Underback, and Randy Helmsman.
So, we rely on the app and their phones to contact with each other in fashion needs contact, and that's kind of an allowance. It's been $25 per month for a while. And discussing, offering others, suggesting they pop it up to $40 per month that they have to fund allowance, because we use their phones for our communications.
Have you used, also their personal phones?
Yeah. So, actually, their personal phone, if she needs to get in touch with one of them, she would call them, or let, then they'd call each other that way.
That's how much your plan would be? That was not how much your plan would be if we gave them the phone, the business phone? We supply the phone, $40?
I guess I can see department heads, but I always thought that $25 was pretty, pretty good enough for personal use, and it's not like, like, after all, the phone calls, you know, what the department head does, I guess that's, and it's just, they still get the $25, you know, on their personal phone bills, for when you need to contact them during the daytime hours.
Any other statements on this?
No, I make a motion that we approve public works loan increase for like $25, from $25 to $40 per month through the day job.
Lance?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Conrad?
Yes.
McGoughlin?
No.
Those figure.
Yes.
Okay, next, discussion of possible approval of paying Thomas Watson $25 an hour for six hours of work for the city cameras.
There was additional work. I said, I just, it seemed just like that, I just made a call. There was additional work we needed to get everything up and going and working, and every couple of problems came up. I think she just contacted Thomas and asked him questions. He, did it work?
So, we tried in-house to reboot the system, so it was Legion Park. The cameras out at Legion Park weren't working for a couple of weeks. And we tried in-house, we tried rebooting it at the site, access, tried to figure something out, nothing was, could work. So, Tom rewrote, found an old backup, rewrote it, and got them back online. And it took them about six hours to complete the task.
$25 an hour, $8 for that service, cameras backup.
Are all the cameras working now? We have discussed this at public safety as well, so just...
We, yes, they're all working. We both look at them every day to make sure there's no red x's, and if there is, we send it off to, to get it fixed. And we are in contacts with Atwood to reposition all of them, hopefully in the next month, or next week, to get them all repositioned. Because some of them right now are pointing at the ground, so they're doing us no, no justice. So, Atwood's going to move them where they need to go.
How many cameras are not repositioned currently?
All of them? Five or six probably?
So, I'm back from the initial installation. And Atwood's is doing that head of 50 again?
So, it was kind of hard for, when Atwood installed them originally, to understand, it was hard for them to adjust them to exactly where we wanted them, because they weren't live. So, they didn't have anything looking to see where each camera was facing. Because there's five cameras on each, on each device. So, there's going to be some fine tuning that needs to be done, and that's just something to do. It's understandable. And access rate was not, they don't do cameras, correct?
They do certain work for the cameras, but not the work that had to be done to get this camera backup.
And that, that's why we've used Thomas.
I need to reach out to that company in Brunel, correct? And maybe get, set up a contract with an actual camera people to monitor, you know, if we have issues, we can just call them and...
I think that's our whole way of solution, yeah. Or at least something to consider.
I would make a motion to approve paying...
I would make a motion, to approve paying Thomas Watson twenty-five dollars an hour for six hours of work for the city cameras for a total of a hundred and fifty dollars.
So.
Lance, yes. Schultz.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Conrad. McGoughlin, yes. Those people.
Yes.
Okay, Human Resources, I show nothing, city clerk has no comments on here. Public input. Any input from the public?
Yes. Jerry Waller, eight ten Mackey Avenue, Sagrini, Iowa. As far as, I was wondering if there's anything that the city has as far as lists of the golf carts that go around town, that what year they were initially had their stickers put on? Because there's a lot of them that are yellow and orange, don't have the, the dark blue colored ones that are available now. And, you know, if you had a list and sent out to different people that didn't redo, and tell them that if they still have their golf cart running around, that it's not in compliance, I think. And, and then that would have, you know, if he sees these people or he sees the golf cart and it's sitting around someplace and it doesn't have the correct coloration on it, then you can, you know, collect on that.
Good point. Thank you.
And he should be looking at that anyway, when he sees a golf cart.
Because I, I talked to him a couple of weeks ago about anytime you come up here on the farmer's market, there's always a yellow sticker on one and another one that has orange all the time. And he said, well, he's going to be going on vacation for the fourth, and he said, and that's after my hours. So, so that's out of sight, out of mind evidently.
Okay, we'll look into that. Thank you. Any other comments from public? Yes, Jerry.
Jerry Waller, eight ten Mackey, yeah, I'm in Sagrini. Every day you can go someplace around in town and there are grass clippings in the street, every single day. And I know that in previous administrations or whatever, they were really, really strict about making sure those clippings are not out in the street because it gets out in the gutters and it is a mess to try and get those cleaned out. And I would, you know, do you want me to call up here when I, when I see those out in the street? So that somebody can tell those people? Because I would gladly do that, I can ride on a bike and I can write it down every day if you want me to. Because I think it's terrible that sometime down the road, Sagrini's going to have to clean out all those, you know, where, wherever it goes, down the sewers. And that's just a, a cost that you don't have to, shouldn't have to put up with.
I agree. Thank you.
Do you want me to call in and tell you when I see them?
You can submit it online too.
Okay. The same way, you want, uh, grass that's too tall, you want to do that too?
Any ordinance you see that, twice.
Okay, I'm, I'm on our old folks, so.
Any other ordinance you want to take care of?
No, I'm, I'm good for this one.
Okay. Any other input? From the council? Employees? If not, I entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
McGoughlin, yes.
Yes.